Ready to get the meeting going? Should we get our check on? Where is it? No shame.
Jim and Tash.
Should we get our check on?
Well, they'll come and they'll be here soon. They have a meeting. They have a full meeting.
I think so. Oh, here they come. What's this? That must have some special meaning or something. Well, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the December 19, 2017, meeting of the Whitehall City Council for the purpose of considering such matters that may come before it, and we got a lot of those this evening. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Coniston.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
President Graham.
Present.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to excuse the absent member.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Greg to excuse the absent member. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
All right, the absent member has been excused. Next, we have our approval of minutes for December 5, 2017, agenda and regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the December 5 minutes.
Second. A motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Greg for approval of the December 5, 2017, minutes. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. Before we go on to our normal agenda, we're going to move on to some recognition for some very special employees of the city. And so, I've got to get down towards it. All right, so we're going to begin. We'll go through and adopt all the resolutions and then we'll go through the presentation. So, under first reading this evening, we have Resolution 62-2017. It's recognizing Casey Thomas as the 2017 Support Administrative Employee of the Year and awarding her a one-time payment of $250 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 62-2017 and move for a suspension of rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 62-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Resolution 62-2017. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Resolution 62-2017 has passed. Now, as I said, we're going to go through all four of these and then we'll back up and get with the actual presentations. Next, we have Resolution 63-2017. It's approving the continu-
Yeah, we don't want to do that one.
How did that one get in there?
65.
Okay. Recognizing Michael Burns as the 2017 Firefighter Paramedic Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $250 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 65-2017 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Staley and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 65-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 65-2017.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Staley, second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Resolution 65-2017. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Resolution 65-2017 has been adopted. Our next one is... These are all jumbled up.
66.
Yes. Resolution 66-2017. It's recognizing Matthew Golden as the 2017 Labor Service Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $250 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 66-2017 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Staley and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 66-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Resolution 66-2017, the rules have been suspended.
Move for its adoption.
Second.
A motion for adoption on Resolution 66-2017 by Mr. Staley and Ms. Coniston. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Resolution 66-2017 has been adopted. Resolution 69-2017. It's recognizing Gary Baker as the 2017 Police Employee of the Year and awarding him a one-time payment of $250 as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 69-2017 and move for the suspension of all the rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Staley and a second by Mr. Greg for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 69-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
All righty, the rules have been suspended on Resolution 69-2017.
Move for its adoption.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Staley and a second by Mr. Greg for adoption of Resolution 69-2017. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Resolution 69-2017 has been adopted. So, we'll begin this evening with our Support Administrative Employee of the Year. What?
So, this is, uh, thank you, Jim. Uh, this is Casey Thomas. Casey works in the Service Department with us, and I'll read just a little bit from the resolution that was also in her nomination by her coworkers. Casey demonstrates her performance aligns with city core values. She responds to requests almost immediately and is willing to take the extra step in making sure all understand the city processes and how those processes benefit the public. She is self-motivated and is willing to use her work when her routine is successful. She seeks work improvement, efficient methods of doing business, and is dependable. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Zach, if I could. TJ asked if I would read something for you, please. Says Casey is an intelligent, organized, hard-working, multitasking genius. She accepts any challenge thrown her way, whether it be related to development, code enforcement, street or service department, community affairs, citizens' questions and concerns, animal control, or budget-related items. Casey will work diligently with the proper department and personnel to resolve the issue. She always has a smile and is a real asset to our city. Casey is a testament to the character of her family. Thank you, Thomases, for sharing your daughter with the City of Whitehall.
Yay.
I'd also like to say something. Now, we really appreciate you filling in on the several occasions where we've needed your help and you stepped right up to the plate, jumped in there with both feet, and we really appreciate your help, and we're looking forward to some more help in the future. When Mary's, uh... When she's got something else that says... Sometimes she has to go to school and stuff, so we need somebody to... No, no, I wasn't going to leave it like that. All right.
Happy holiday, Mary.
All right. Well, now, we'll move on to the recognition of Michael Burns as the Firefighter Paramedic Employee of the Year.
Hello, Mike. Wonder reading from the resolution here. Mike Burns is a quality assurance expert in his role as EMS coordinator. He uses his skill and meticulous review each and every EMS report taken by the fire department to the benefit of every resident in this community. He helps to educate your council's peers on how to provide the best medical care for the patient. Mike was articulate and professional while representing the City of Whitehall Division of Fire, being accountable, well-informed, and strives to improve. A couple of things from his nomination. You guys believed in us when we wanted to create this position, and I thank you for that. And Mike came into the interview with a five-year plan, which, you know, impressed all of us. And the thing that he's done in the quality assurance is he... It's hard for all of us. Can you imagine anybody that's walking around, following you around, trying to see if you did the right thing?
And I hope not.
So, a hard job he does, and I really appreciate him for it. Also, there was another thing on his nomination here. If you were to witness Mike and advise the district to recruit educators, you really understand how smart he is and what an asset he is for us, so thanks a lot, Mike. That's you.
You know, this is going to be on the city Facebook page, so just got to get all the shots in.
All right. Now, we'll have the recognition of Matthew Golden as the 2017 Labor Service Employee of the Year.
Thank you, President. Thank you, Council. It is an honor to be here this evening, and Matt, we want to reiterate, and I have a couple of things to share as well. So, in 2017, Matthew Golden did demonstrate excellent leadership and professionalism. He, without hesitation, displayed conduct supporting the mission, vision, and values of the City of Whitehall Parks and Recreation Department, and Matt exceeds expectations in responding to the city and its customer needs now. So, Matt, here's your resolution. But, and that is directly from the nomination. And as many of you know, Matt has served our team here for over two decades in the city, and his signature is all over our parks. And he has helped create the leisure space that our community enjoys. And in the past year, Matt's efforts, his leadership of his team, the early successful opening of our splash pad about Matt and his team, that would not have opened, guys, and that cannot have been not said here. Also, a lot of the improvements, everything that you see going on in our parks comes back to Matt's leadership and his working with his team. Those ideas came from our crew, and he has been taking the opportunity to just everything from new park entry signs to better maintenance and working practices, and it has been a joy this first year working with you, Matt. Thank you very much, and congratulations on your recognition.
We need one for our office, Matt.
All right. And now, we come to the recognition of Gary Baker as the 2017 Police Employee of the Year.
I'm Deputy Chief Dan Calso. The chief could not be here tonight. He had an emergency, had to run out, and so he sends his regrets. I really wanted to be here. But I do have some words for him, so I'm going to start off by reading the words from the chief here. Officer Baker is a strong, informal leader. He has admired his peers in this community. He is the example of commitment to excellence and one of the most proactive and motivated officers in the division. He is often sought out by supervisors to lead strategic plan operations due to his trustworthiness and his expertise. He is an excellent at discerning the difference between the letter of law and the spirit of law, making him an example of fair and unbiased policing. He is a member of the SWAT team, and he volunteers to be involved in nearly every single enforcement operation conducted by the agency. For this reason, he was selected by his platoon as the officer they most look up to and the one they want to recognize as their officer of the year. Congratulations, Gary. I've got a few quick things, and this is true. So, when we go to hire someone, we often sit in a room, and after we do an interview with the chief, and we sit down, we discuss, and we're like, should we hire this guy or not? It comes down to what do you like, what do you don't like, do you think you'll make a good police officer? And we always go, do you think you could be Gary Baker? Because that hits up the end. That has to be up and down. And to demonstrate that, we actually had a recruit who was in coaching, who hired that great job, was doing fine. He quit, out of the blue, quit and said, you know, I don't think I can ever be a Gary Baker. He actually came and also said that.
Oh, wow.
Okay, well, that's the standard, so. He was a great officer, and we're really happy to have him. Thanks.
Pictures, pictures.
Picture. Pictures.
Sorry. Think we should, uh...
Yeah, gotta turn that way. Turn that way, now turn that way.
All my control.
All right. And one more time, on behalf of Council, we want to congratulate all four employees of the year. We think you all do a great job. In fact, you know, it's... You must stand out because, as far as I know, and I believe that every employee that we have in the city is doing a great job out there. You guys are just going that extra mile, so we appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right. We'll move... We'll start back with the normal agenda, and we'll begin with our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you'll have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record, please. Yes.
I'm so nervous.
My name is Alice Kaiser.
My address is 560 Court Right Court, Pickerington, Ohio.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I came here just to say, it won't take three minutes, and forgive my nervousness. I haven't had any public speaking experience since the Stone Age when I was in Mr. Klein's speech class at good old Whitehall Yearling. And that's a long time ago.
A long time ago.
I just came to say a few words of support for Dennis and Phyllis Nutter moving their business here to Whitehall DNR Body Shop. Like me, they grew up in Whitehall and raised their family in Whitehall, and as a matter of fact, my dad sat in that Ward One council seat for many, many years back in the day. So, yes. I just... I know that Dennis and Phyllis have worked hard through the years together to build a good, solid, honest, well-run business. I know that because I've been one of their customers for 30-some years, even to the point that Dennis told me one time that I needed my own file cabinet because I had my car in there so much. Yeah, it wasn't all my fault. I hit a deer, and somebody hit my car and all that, but I just... I just think that their business would be an asset to the City of Whitehall, and I know that Whitehall is a wonderful town, and it's growing by leaps and bounds, and I just think that they would do well to have a business like theirs, so. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else who would like to come forward, you may do so at this time. Have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gerald Dixon, 3877 Donie Street. I come to you with a chest congestion, so if I seem a little breathy, you'll forgive me. First of all, I'd like to thank, and they're mostly gone now, Ms. Thomas and Mr. Barnes, Golden and Baker, for their honors tonight. During the ceremony earlier this week to mark the start of demolition of the Commons at Royal Landing, I'd hoped there might be more solemnity, given the tragedies which occurred, which brought the parcel to the city and this development opportunity, but all I heard were gleeful shouts and gladness to tear the place down. What I never heard acknowledged was how the city came to this opportunity in the first place, those circumstances which fairly started with the accidental death of a child and crescendoed with the shooting death of a young man. These incidents, among others, which started the complex's descent into a situation where our city could and did purchase the property, not a very happy undertone to lend itself to a celebratory development ceremony. However, buildings without people, communities without its human lives, are nothing, and so, since these lives lost lent themselves to the circumstances that lead our city to success reborn, I thought it only fitting that someone mentioned their names in passing. Carlos Mullins, Jr., just four years old, when the open stove that was being used to heat the apartment fell on him, trapping him inside. Gregory L. Smith, a young man of 28, dead of a gunshot wound.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time for the poll public? All right. We'll move on to our standing committee reports, and we'll begin with Administration and Financial Management. Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration, Financial Management did meet last week. Our minutes are on file in the Council Office. I'm not sure if we're meeting next Tuesday. That hasn't been determined yet, but if we do, we will, in the back room at 6:30.
Okay. Next, we have Community Engagement. Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, President Graham. Community Engagement met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week in the back sometime after 6:30.
All righty, thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement. Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement also met last week. Our minutes are on file, and apparently, we'll be meeting next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 here in the back.
All righty, thank you. Next, we have Economic Development. Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file, and the mayor may not meet next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back.
All right, thank you, sir. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services. Chairperson Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance Services also met last week. I hope I was going to a Christmas place. But, anyway, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet, if we meet, back in the back at 6:30 next week.
All righty, thank you. And we all... Next is Public Safety. Chairperson Staley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met in the back last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. If there's a meeting next Tuesday, we'll be at 6:30.
All righty, thank you, sir. And lastly, we have Parks and Recreation. That's Chairperson Canery's unable to attend the meeting this evening. However, the committee did meet last Tuesday. Their minutes are on file in the Council Office, and they shall also meet next Tuesday sometime after 7:30 or 6:30, if called upon to do so. That's all the standing committee reports we have. We'll move on to our officials' reports, and we'll begin with our mayor, Ms. Kim Maggard.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our employees of the year. Mike Burns from Fire, Matt Golden, who is sitting out in the audience and still here, yay, with his lovely wife, also Gary Baker and Casey Thomas. You know, it's important that we recognize those employees who give even more than 100%. They don't just give 100% every day, but sometimes they even give more, and I want to say thank you for that. I would like to have Council's consideration of the following ordinances for passage tonight, 105, 106, 114, 115, 124, 125, and also Resolution 67. I would like to say that the Commons of Royal Landing have been a problem for Whitehall for some time, not just in the past few years. When that was known under a different name, it was sold a few years ago, probably eight to 10 years ago, I think, for a mere $750,000. The landlord who bought it used it only for money. That's obvious because of the accident that happened to the little boy when a stove wasn't secured properly, also when landlords rent to whomever just in order to get their monthly check without checking on references or caring about the neighborhood that they have their business in. So, let me say that we were happy last week on Friday when we put a wrecking ball into one of those buildings, and we're happy to see the rest of them being demolished. We do not forget what happened and what has happened in the past, for that was our reason for going forward. We want to make life better for our residents and our citizens in Whitehall. That's our goal, and for one to think that we forget about the bad things that have happened is ridiculous. I'm appalled by that statement. How dare you? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Next, we have our city auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want you to know that I've worked hard the last two weeks so that you won't possibly have to have a meeting next Tuesday. I have no official report other than what you have in front of you tonight. I would like to ask for favorable considerations on ordinances 106, 119, 120, 121, 123, and Resolution 68. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our Director of Development and Public Safety, Mr. Zach Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report this evening. I've worked slightly less hard than Dan over the past two weeks to ensure you don't need a meeting next week as well. The only thing of note that I would mention this evening, well, two things really. One, our crews have converted over to our equipment for snow removal. We were very thankful that we did that at the time that we did so that we were prepared last week and last weekend for the snow, or the previous weekend for the snow that we got. That was very helpful. And for many of you who live and travel down Etna Road, the road is open, was opened officially Monday morning. There are some punch-out items that they're still working on. I know there's one rain garden that they're still working on that should be completed soon, but they have reached substantial completion, and we're excited to have that roadway opened. excited to have that roadway opened once again. So, that's all the report that I have. If I don't see any of you, have a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, the following officials' reports have been filed in the council office. We have the auditor's expense report for November two thousand seventeen. We have the auditor's bank report for November two thousand seventeen. The auditor's statement of cash position report for November two thousand seventeen, along with the auditor's revenue support, revenue report for November two thousand seventeen. We also have received the treasurer's investment report for November two thousand seventeen, the treasurer's activity by fund report for November, the treasurer's fund reconciliation report for November, and we also received the mayor's report to council for November two thousand seventeen. Under communications, petitions, and claims, we have five items listed on the agenda this evening. They're the minutes for, from the December seven, two thousand seventeen meeting of the planning commission. And we also have received a written favorable recommendation from the Whitehall Planning Commission on ordinance one-one-seven, two thousand seventeen. We have also received a written unfavorable recommendation from the planning commission on ordinance number one-oh-eight, two thousand seven, twenty-thousand, twenty-seventeen. We've also received a written favorable recommendation from the Whitehall Planning Commission on ordinance one-ten, twenty-seventeen, and a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control that the division denies and rejects the renewal application of a C-one-two liquor permit for Hamilton and Main Sanoco, four-six-hundred East Main Street. Those are all the communications, petitions, and claims we have. We do have a couple of public hearings coming out this evening. We will, in a moment, we will begin the first one. However, first, I will read the ordinance. It is amending zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under one-one-two-three-point-one-zero-C-twenty-two to allow Jason Glazer, DBA Jay's Metal Crafting, to operate a welding, repair, and creative metal ironwork business on property located at forty-twenty-five East Main Street, Unit C, parcel number zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-one-nine-seven-two-zero-zero, owned by Joyce Sheets. At this time, I will open the public hearing on ordinance one-oh-eight, twenty-seventeen. And if there are any persons here who would like to speak in favor of ordinance one-oh-eight, twenty-seventeen, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you.
How's everybody doing today?
Good.
My name is Jason Glazer. I live at nine-five Vista Drive in Gahan, Ohio. I just wanted to begin by saying it's been quite the strenuous journey to get here before he did today. This journey began in March of this year, as my student loans started requiring me to pay on them, and my part-time funds from Vivaldi just was not cutting it. At the same time, I was also juggling assisting my dad construct a new bar on High Street called Standard Hall and complete a large wrought iron fence job near Goodeal Park. My father has always been super creative with metal, and years ago, he randomly created a unique little candle holder type thing for my mom when I was very little. I stumbled upon this very intriguing candle holder while going through old stuff at the shop earlier this year, and it inspired me to create Jay's Metal Crafting and facilitate everything I learned about creative metal into this new business. I registered with the IRS and received an employer identification number and registered with the Ohio Business Gateway to begin reporting our future sales. I engineered several unique and very desirable items, including our candelabras, bottle trees, keg grills, and wine racks. I was informed by the city that we had to have a special permit in order to build anything in Whitehall. So, immediately, we scheduled a meeting with Mr. Joe Ryan, who gave me the rundown of the process and how to fill out the application. I presented my case to planning commission, in which I was asked a series of questions aimed at the storage of items outside. And the mistake I made was assuring them that nothing would be stored outside, just as we were completing a huge fence and furniture project at the shop, where half of it was outside and waiting pickup. Unsurprisingly, as the city council meeting ensued, we were denied because the outside of the shop was horrendous in more ways than one. At the end of the meeting, several members of the council talked to me and ensured me that if we cleaned everything up and proved that business management has changed, then the future application should gain much more support. Over the last few months, I have greatly considered the request of the city council and put forth my greatest effort to achieve these fixes. I was committed to clearing up every single issue brought forward by the council. We registered for occupancy and was approved by the building inspector and fire department, achieving that requested goal. The entire shop is reorganized and rearranged to better facilitate the smaller household items that we hope to be producing in the future. Each and every bit of trash and disorder was removed from the outside, and all that remains is the fence erected to separate our parking lot from the nearby children's services lot. We installed an industrial ventilation fan to the back of the building and constructed a paint booth for the extremely minimal painting that our future work will demand. I filled out the special permit application, being sure to add as many pictures of the interior and exterior of the building as I could to show you guys just how spotless we made our area. I've been as thorough as possible to make sure Jay's Metal Crafting adds to the aesthetics of Whitehall. And I just wanted to stress that I'm not just a figurehead of this new company, and this is not just a show. There's been an entire change in ownership and organization of the company, including the building rental agreement, which has been transferred to my name. My father struggles with chronic pain, is preparing for spinal surgery, and is no longer in the physical and mental shape to run a business. Additionally, the entire aspect of products we create has entirely changed. Instead of huge bar furniture and long sections of wrought iron fence that don't even fit in our building, the products we create today are crafty, useful, and gorgeous steel metal art, in which we create specialty household items such as wine racks, candle holders, and jewelry trees. No longer are we completing projects that require heavy lifting and huge amounts of welding and detailing. Instead, everything is compact, neat, and efficient, just like the future business I'm trying to build. Proving myself in this new business is very hard, considering the terms of the previous council meeting. But in light of that, I'm here to continue proving that we deserve to build the foundation of our business here in Whitehall. More than anything, I wish to prove the loyalty and integrity that Jay's Metal Crafting will continue to put forth. Thank you for this opportunity.
You made the statement that one of us, or several of us implied that if you corrected some of these issues, that, you know, maybe you'd get another look at the special permit. And the last time that it was applied for was actually by your father, correct?
Yes.
And so, you illustrated some things that have changed, which I'm glad you did do a lot of those things, because they were code violations, and that was the issue before. But the business is now owned by you, not your father.
Yes.
And it says in the planning commission minutes that you also operate under your own federal ID.
Yes.
And you've sort of morphed your business, what you do, you've downsized it a little bit, therefore, you're solving the issues of, like, the fences being outside, a larger project. What I see is, it's not the same entity coming in and making the application for a special permit. What I see is the guy that took what we said, and you not only changed the things that were wrong, but you went above and beyond that. You now operate the business yourself. It's under a different federal tax ID. Your father now works for you. He doesn't run the business. So, I don't see this as coming back, doing the same thing. What I see is a young man that is trying to do a startup business, that didn't just lay down and give up. I think you've made some key changes, and I'm impressed.
Thank you so much.
Because I think that night, you were defeated. You just couldn't believe the state that it was all in and that it was handled all wrong. I know the planning commission gave you an unfavorable ruling, and I respect that commission a whole lot. But they, some of their language and the reasons why reflect back to issues that took place under the old permit application and the way it was handled. And I, myself personally, I don't put that totally on your shoulders. I think you have corrected a lot of the issues that we had concerns with. So, I thank you for that, and I thank you for not giving up.
Thank you.
Very nice presentation. Thank you. Can I ask how many square feet you have?
I believe we are three thousand square feet, just under three thousand square feet.
Pretty good size.
I was very surprised to see you over at the Winter Fest as well.
Thank you. That was our first show we've ever been to.
Very good show. Nice pieces.
Thank you so much.
So, going forward, we're not going to see any large items stored outside?
Absolutely not. That is a fact, because the entire aspect of the business changed. We don't even do anything larger than ten feet. That's one thing that I made clear to myself. I don't want to do anything that I can't lift by myself. So, if any work comes that way, we can turn it down, because we don't even need that kind of work anymore. We're going in an entirely different direction, trying to hit a lot of the smaller craft shows that Columbus and a lot of the surrounding cities present. That's where we're trying to head.
And never seen ever the opportunity.
That's true.
You could also sell stuff online.
And that's honestly, that's where we're trying to head at this point. The craft shows, local craft shows, I plan on hitting these for the next year, try and gain a local following. And at that point, you really expand into your website and attract the world, which is kind of like broad, but that is the goal in the end.
As long as net neutrality, definitely.
Exactly. I know, right? Just another thing we've got to deal with.
You said you have approved installation for exhaust repair room?
Yes. The city inspector, the building inspector.
Other questions my council have?
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. President, I don't have a question. I just have a clarification about occupancy. So, you know, their occupancy today, that they have been granted after inspection by both the city service department and the fire department, is for retail. That location is a permitted use for retail. The special permit that the applicant is applying for is to actually be able to fabricate and manufacture the pieces that would be retail on site. So, just a matter of clarification.
And, and so, just to make sure I understand, the stuff they made before, the prior business who made things of metal, they also sold stuff from the premises?
That is my understanding. The previous applicant in the previous business did not have an occupancy. The difference here is that this applicant came in, applied for an occupancy to be able to do the things inside the shop that he would be then permitted to do while he worked through the special permit process. So, to my knowledge, the applicant, since applying and receiving his occupancy, hasn't made anything in the site on the premise.
Okay.
I believe that's accurate, right? Attaboy.
So, there's no current code violations?
To my knowledge, there are no current code violations on the site.
And how long has that been?
I will tell you that we have not, I couldn't, off the top of my head, Mr. Morrison, I couldn't give you an exact period of time. What I would tell you anecdotally is, there haven't been any code violations since this young man took over the business.
Which is probably about the time you applied for the special permit?
Yeah.
It's about the time that he applied for the occupancy.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak in favor of ordinance one-oh-eight, twenty-seventeen? One more time, if there's anyone who would like to come forward and speak in favor of ordinance one-oh-eight, twenty-seventeen, please do so at this time. All right, having, not seeing anyone, then I will ask if there are any persons here who are in opposition to ordinance one-oh-eight, twenty-seventeen. Now is your opportunity. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Joe Ryan, three-sixty South Yerling Road. I don't have anything to add. Everything that you need to make your decisions in the minutes. I'm just here to answer any further questions that you might have.
Okay, fair enough. What questions might council, further questions might council have, or?
Yeah, Mr. Ryan, your comments in the planning commission, you said that the new applicant has worked hard to turn the business around and make sure it is kept clean. But the history of the building and its conditions make it difficult for the staff to support case seven-four-six, this one. Are you saying that, that staff doesn't feel confident that all these issues have been corrected?
I would say from a zoning standpoint, it is important to look at the history of the property. However, from a different standpoint, from a business standpoint, from the point of view of, it's a different applicant, there's a different argument there to be made. But from a zoning standpoint, from city staff standpoint, it was hard to overcome the long history of the property, despite the different owner.
And some of those issues could also be held, the landlord could be held responsible for certain code violations as well.
That could be said, yes, that's correct.
But isn't, wouldn't you agree that, at least in my thinking, that part of our philosophy, especially coming out of a strategic planning that we did, is to encourage startup businesses with the hopes that they grow and maybe reestablish themselves in, you know, that step-up facility? So, am I wrong in thinking that it is not a good idea to support what we see today and the changes we have seen as evidence that possibly this could be a success?
Yeah, I think it's absolutely valid to say that, and that's up to city council to vote on.
Okay, thank you.
To that end, I, you know, I was thinking, I guess, along the same lines, because I know at one point, we talked about, what we call them, Zach, incubator, trying to use some kind of incubators to get small businesses to start and to prosper and hopefully stay, you know, as they succeed. So, speaking for myself, I see a different applicant. I see a different outlook. I see, I see a good possibility.
Absolutely. And again, the city staff in this case unfortunately has to, you know, follow the zoning and be the bad guy, you know, in this. But ultimately, it's up to city council to decide and make that choice.
Well, we respect your input on not only this case, but every case, Joe.
It's difficult, certainly, to make the choice, but again, it's up to city council.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, just for the record, and I don't know if it matters or not, but of the members on the board, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, three of them were not present that night.
That's correct. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak in opposition to ordinance one-oh-eight, twenty-seventeen? One more time, who else would like to come forward and speak in opposition to ordinance one-oh-eight, twenty-seventeen? All right, I will close the public hearing at this.
If I might, I'd like to have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
What's your plans for growth as far as employees?
As far as employees, I do not plan on adding any employees within the next six months. I feel I see projected growth. And once I see projected growth, I'll probably start considering adding employees, because that crosses the whole of the grid when it comes to taxes and filing for an employee. So, within the next six months, six, eight months, I do not foresee more than employees.
What's your growth, do you anticipate within the next year?
Within the next year to two years, I could plan to see a maximum of four employees. I probably could even see myself within four. But we would probably be more than enough to support more of an employee.
Over four, including yourself?
All right. Any further questions regarding ordinance one-oh-eight, twenty-seventeen from anyone up front here? All right, I will now close the public hearing on ordinance one-oh-eight, twenty-seventeen, and we will move on to ordinance one-ten, twenty-seventeen, which I will open that public hearing immediately after reading the ordinance. It is amending the zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under one-one-two-three-point-one-zero-C-twenty-seven to allow D and R Body Shop to operate a specialty automotive repair establishment that will include motor vehicle body and fender repair on the property located. motor vehicle body and fender repair on the property located at 951A and 951B, Robinwood Avenue, parcel number 090000311, property owned by Charter Properties LLC. At this time, I will open this public hearing regarding ordinance 110-2017 and ask if there's anyone here who is in favor of ordinance 110-2017, to please come forward at this time.
Mr. President, for the record, I'm kind of recording Alice's statement as in favor, and I appreciate her comments.
Thank you. I'm not as well prepared as everybody else. The short of it is, we've been in business for 43 years in Columbus, and the property was sold, and we have to move, and we, they gave us 30 days to get out. We quickly was trying to relocate, and what we want to do is relocate our business into the Charter Properties on Robinwood. And we have a total of eight employees. We have many accounts, Whitehall being one of them. We were not anticipating moving, but it became necessary because we want to continue serving our clients, our, our client base from Bexley, Whitehall, Oaxana, and, um, this was the, the location that one of our customers said, "I have this." And then I went straight to Zach and, and Ryan, I mean, it's with Joe, and they showed me how to do the process and, and do the application, and basically, "I'm just waiting for your approval." We did go ahead and sign the lease because we had to start putting some stuff in there. We are in the process of moving equipment tomorrow. And we are also, as far as permits for the paint booth, we have all the current permits through Columbus. We will just be transferring over to Whitehall, going through their applications and facilitating anything that they, they need. We are anticipating putting a new paint booth in with a fire suppression system. Other than that, we're just mom and pop trying to keep, you know, our business alive. We've been here 43 years, married, graduated from Whitehall. That's it.
That's a good story.
Yeah.
Well, you answered my only question, that was the paint booth, so thank you.
Yes.
Who else has?
I believe you're going to be taking over 951A, D and C.
Yes. We, we can't get into C until the end of January.
So C wasn't included in this, was it? But it won't be affected by the special permit, is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak in favor of, of ordinance 110-2017?
Joe Ryan, 360 South Yearling Road. You have the minutes, and so I will take any questions that you might have. As far as a quick summary, I was thinking about what I would ask myself, what questions I would have if I was reviewing this application, and what I might have is, we have that Main Street redevelopment plan that we've cited quite frequently over the past few years and not allowing auto-oriented uses on that corridor because we want to promote more office, more retail-type uses, more active uses, and not something like auto repair, auto sales. However, because this Robinwood Commercial Center, as you've seen, is more, is not on the street frontage, rather out back, that's a very, very important point to clarify when staff was evaluating this application. And because of the nature of the property, there's other warehouse-type uses there, other, those not in zone industrial, heavy business-type uses there. And a lot of those more intensive business uses such as auto sales are special permit uses for that reason, because they're more intensive, we want to have more checks on those types of uses. And so, because that Robinwood Commercial Center already has those types of uses, we are comfortable with allowing them in that space, and it is applicable because it cannot be seen from Main Street. We also had very lengthy conversation in the planning commission to make sure that there would be no other vehicles parked outside, and they went through their whole business model. I'm sure they can probably answer better than I about everything, where if it comes in, it stays inside overnight. And I would clarify as well, I believe I misspoke about the parking during the meeting, but they do meet the parking requirements needed for this type of use.
What other questions might any numbers have? So I, I do, I do would like to get clarification on a vehicle that's brought in, where will that vehicle be kept when it's not being worked on?
Everything's kept inside. You know, we think it would be outside overnight, it would be like if it was an accident overnight, and that tow truck.
Okay.
brought it, and there is a loading dock area. It would be back inside, it will not be out front, like the office.
What, what would be the capability of storage? For how many vehicles could you get in the building?
I'd say at least, I'd say at least 30.
Oh. So I'm assuming there must be a ramp?
There's, there's loading docks and there's two ramps.
Okay, all right. Pretty hard to get a car up the loading dock.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I just wanted a little clarification on that. I, I, you know, it's, I have seen other body shops that don't keep anything outside. They barely have enough room for their own employees' cars, but it's not, what, I don't believe it's, to me, it doesn't seem normal, but I think that's a great way of doing it. Because that certainly adds to, um, it, it takes away from the appearance. All righty, well, I appreciate, appreciate your answers, sir. Anyone else have any questions? All righty, is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak in favor of ordinance 110-2017? Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak in opposition of ordinance 110-2017? I will ask one more time, if there's anyone to speak in opposition of ordinance 110-2017, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 110-2017, and at this time, I'm going to ask our council secretary to please verify on, call the roll on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes, you know, I could do that.
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Yes. All right, that's great. Well, we will begin now with our ordinances and resolutions, remaining resolutions for the evening, and we begin with ordinance 105-2017. It's making appropriations for current general fund expenses, street expenses, and state highway material expenses during the period from January 1, 2018 to December 31, 2018, in the total sum of $33,217,124 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 105-2017 and move for its adoption.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and adoption of ordinance 105-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Ordinance 105-2017 has passed. Our next ordinance is 106-2017. It's making an appropriation for certain revenue, certain special revenue, internal service and fiduciary accounts for the calendar year 2018, in the total sum of $14,829,634 and 32 cents, and also declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 106-2017 and move to adopt.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction, I mean, yes, an adoption of ordinance 106-2017, I've got a long way to go. 106-2017, questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 106-2017 has been adopted. Next on the agenda, we have ordinance 108-2017. It's amending the zoning map attached to chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10(c)(22) to allow Jason Glazer, DBA Jay's Metal Crafting, to operate a welding, repair, and creative metal ironwork business on property located at 4025 East Main Street, Unit C, parcel number 09000197200, owned by Joyce Sheets.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 108-2017 and move for its adoption.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Greg for introduction and adoption of ordinance 108-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 108-2017 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 109-2017. It's to authorize the execution of an amended and restated community reinvestment area agreement and an amendment, and amend, and restated tax increment financing agreement.
Mr. President?
Say that again.
ordinance 109-2017 and move for the adoption.
Second. The motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Mr. Greg for introduction and adoption of ordinance 109-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Ordinance 109-2017 has been adopted. Our last ordinance on, for third readings this evening, is 110-2017. It's amending the zoning map attached to chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10(c)(27) to allow DNR Body Shop to operate a specialty automotive repair establishment that will include motor vehicle body and fender repair on the property located at 951A and 951B, Robinwood Avenue, parcel number 090000, I think, 311, property owned by Charter Properties LLC.
Mr. President, could I respectfully, well, no, if I could, to avoid any future issues, if I could respectfully request that counsel consider amending this ordinance to include 951C, so that there are no potential issues in the future?
Okay, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 110-2017 and move for its amendment to include 951C.
Adoption on the table.
Right?
Yeah, we have an adoption.
We have an adoption on the table. Yeah, somebody, all somebody has to do is take back their motion.
Okay, so done. I was going to just roll it up into one.
Yeah, you, uh.
Couldn't I just roll it into one to, to?
Yep.
The person who's seconded, I believe, has to do it first and then.
I think by Robert's Rules of Orders, you need to.
Just pull it back.
Pull that motion back or.
Yeah, that's what I said, the person has to.
Okay, and I was trying to roll it into one, I apologize, okay.
Take the, yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. President, I'd like to withdraw my motion to.
Very good.
For the adoption of ordinance 110-2017.
All right, was that seconded before we got to that point?
I think so.
No, I don't think it was.
No, it doesn't have to, uh, he's withdrawing the motion, so it does not require a second. Because there's no motion now for a second. All right, now.
He can motion as read if you read in 951C.
That's correct.
Instead of.
How about I do this?
Instead of amending.
How about I do this? No, to amend as read, okay? Let me read it. Amending the zoning map attached to chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and is subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10(c)(27) to allow DNR Body Shop to operate a specialty automotive repair establishment that will include motor vehicle and fender repair on the property located at 951A, 951B, and 951C, Robinwood Avenue, parcel number 090000311, property owned by Charter Properties LLC.
Mr. President, I'd like to amend ordinance number 110-2017 as read.
Okay.
And can I move for its adoption at that point?
No, you got to do it second first.
You have to do the amendment first.
Second the amendment.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, and then I did get a motion from Mr. Staley for, to amend ordinance 110-2017 as read. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
It's red and move for suspension.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
All right, it has been amended to include 951C.
At this point, I would like to introduce ordinance 110-2017 and move for its adoption as amended. Can we draw this out any longer for you guys?
It's a comedy of errors.
Director Woodruff stated it might save time down the road.
Yes.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Staley for adoption of ordinance 110, amended ordinance 110-2017. Questions or comments? Lord knows, we've had plenty. Ms. Frymark, without any further ado, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
I say, yes, Merry Christmas, Hallelujah, and pass the tile and all.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Yes.
Amended ordinance 110-2017 has been adopted. Those are, that's the last item we have under third reading, under second reading. We have ordinance 114-2017, amending 161.38 of the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, titled Salary Schedule and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 114-2017 and move for a suspension of rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Greg for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 114-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 114-2017.
Move to adopt.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Greg for adoption of ordinance 114-2017. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Ordinance 114-2017 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 115-2017. It's amending 161.37, titled Table of Authorized Personnel, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 115-2017 and move for a suspension of rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 115-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please. Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 115-2017.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of ordinance 115-2017. Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 115-2017 has been adopted. Now somehow or another, we had one sneak in here on us. It's ordinance 116-2017. It's being read by title only. Are we sure about that? It's amending Section 1127.02, titled Sign Standards by Zone, in the codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, to update the industrial sign code. Again, that's being read by title only. It also has a public hearing set for January 2nd, 2018.
And that would be why.
Yeah. All right, so that's the last item we have under second readings. Under first reading, we're gonna start with 119-2017, which is making and approving a supplemental appropriation of $25,000 from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the utility expense account, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 119-2017, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 119-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 119-2017 has been adopted. Next, I mean, I'm sorry. The rules have been suspended.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of ordinance 119-2017. Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 119-2017 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 120-2017. It's making and approving a supplemental appropriation of $22,000 from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the street lighting expense account, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 120-2017, move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Greg for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 120-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 120-2017.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Greg for adoption of ordinance 120-2017. Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 120-2017 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 121-2017, repealing ordinance 113-2017, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 121-2017, move for a suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 121-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 121-2017.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of ordinance 121-2017. Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 121-2017 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 122-2017. This is gonna go quick. To amend the City Income Tax Code to adopt Sections 718.80 through 718.95, the Ohio Revised Code, and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. Our next ordinance after that is ordinance 123-2017. It's approving and making an appropriation transfer in the amount of $13,000 from the Safety Director, Safety Director Salary Account to the Radio Operator's Salary Account, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 123-2017 and move for a suspension of rules.
Second.
I slowed down to give you more time to rest.
All right, I have a, a motion by Mr. Bailey with a second by Mr. Staley for adoption and introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 123-2017. Questions or comments?
You make it look easy.
Yeah. Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey? Yes.
All right, the rules have been suspended on ordinance 123-2017.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Staley for adoption of ordinance 123-2017. Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 123-2017 has been adopted. Our next ordinance on the docket is ordinance 124-2017, approving and making a supplemental appropriation from the Capital Improvement Fund to the Capital Improvement Expense Account in the amount of $70,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 124-2017, move for a suspension of rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Greg for introduction and suspension of all, all rules on ordinance 124-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 124-2017.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Greg for adoption of ordinance 124-2017. Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 124-2017 has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance 125-2017. It's authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $300,000 from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the Recreation Park Fund expense account, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 125-2017, move for a suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Staley for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 125-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 125-2017.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, a second by Mr. Staley for adoption of ordinance 125-2017. Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 125-2017 has been adopted. We've already taken care of Resolution 62-2017, so we will move on to Resolution 63-2017. It's approving the continuation of a tax exemption agreement with Realty Income Columbus and FedEx Ground Package Systems, Inc., in conjunction with the City of Whitehall Community Reinvestment Area Program, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance, Resolution 3417, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 63-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Does anybody have to leave the room?
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Don't write that down.
All right, the rules have been suspended on Resolution 63-2017.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Resolution 63-2017. Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 63-2017 has been adopted. Something just struck me as being funny. All right, next, we have Resolution 64-2017. It's approving the continuation of a tax exemption agreement with wallet communities in conjunction with the City of Whitehall Community Reinvestment Area Program, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution 64-2017, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 64-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 64, the rules have been suspended on Resolution 64-2017.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Resolution 64-2017. Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 64-2017 has been adopted. We've already moved on Resolutions 65 and 66, so we will move to Resolution 67. It's proclaiming the week of January 21 through 27, 2018, as Public Education Week, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 67-2017, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Coniston, a second by Mr. Greg for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 67-2017. Questions or comments? Ms. Freymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on resolution sixty-seven, twenty seventeen.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Ms. Coniston, second by Mr. Greg for adoption of resolution sixty-seven, twenty seventeen. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-seven, twenty seventeen has been adopted. All right. Next we have resolution sixty-eight, twenty seventeen, resolving to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, like to introduce resolution sixty-eight, two thousand seventeen, and move for a suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Staley for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution sixty-eight, twenty seventeen. Questions or comments? I don't know how you guys keep all these things straight. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on resolution sixty-eight, twenty seventeen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Staley for adoption of resolution sixty-eight, twenty seventeen. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-eight, twenty seventeen has been adopted, and our last item on the agenda is resolution sixty-nine, twenty seventeen, and we've already taken care of that item.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the new Parks and Recreation Commission members, Mark Schreiber and Chris Bolich.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Coniston and a second by Mr. Greg for the appointment of Mark Schreiber and Chris Bolich to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Mr. President? I wish to make a motion to award Council Secretary a two-point-five percent raise effective January one, two thousand eighteen.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Morrison, a second by Mr. Greg for, to increase the wage of the Council Secretary to two point, or by two-point-five percent effective January one, two thousand eighteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, I'll bet you call the roll on this one real quick.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Well, congratulations. Now, I believe that was our last item of legislation. Yes?
I believe so.
Yes.
All right. It's our second opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you can save me a couple minutes of talking and let me catch my breath. State your name and address for the record.
Gerald Dixon, thirty-eight, seventy-seven, Donie Street. I wanted to take a moment to thank both Councilman Greg and Staley, there you are, for the service they provided this city in their respective terms. Thank you. Being though that the Dixons and the Staleys have been friends for over forty years, I wanted to just take a moment and call Councilman Staley. So young and stepping forward to serve his city as his grandfather did with honor. Jumping in from the get-go, being proactive and getting things done for his committee for the benefit of the city. I applaud his proactive earnestness and his decency. I suspect your grandfather is proud of you, as well, I hope, the citizens of Ward Two in your service. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? All right. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is John Fetters, forty-seven, fourteen, Harbinger Circle East. Both as a member of the commission and, more importantly, as a citizen, I wanted to thank Council, Mayor, and others for your continued support for Parks and Recreation Department. Also, take this opportunity to thank the Shanans and Matt for the wonderful job they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come forward at this time? It's your last opportunity for the year two thousand eight, or seventeen, to come forward and make a statement. You'll have up to three minutes to do so. All right. We will move on to community date board. Christmas is next week.
It is.
Or is it five days?
In two years is that?
Just in case you weren't aware, I wanted to get that out there.
Thank you for that. Because what day is that?
Forty-fifth is here.
Sunday.
Monday.
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 Oh, Monday?
Yeah.
I was a day early.
I'd like to invite everybody to, on Thursday, the December twenty-first, at seven o'clock over at the police station, the community's gonna gather for a community sing-along. I'm hoping it's a sing-along or a how-along or whatever you wanna call it, but we're gonna do some carols. So, please join us, and then afterwards, we will all venture for some hot chocolate and get warm. So, it should be a lot of fun.
All right. Sounds good. Who else has something for community date board? Nobody? All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna remind everybody that council is canceled next week.
Thank you, Zach.
All right.
Despite what I said.
Who else has something?
I'd like to think I planted a seed.
I just wanna make sure that Karen's not there.
Who else has something for community date board?
I wanna second that.
I don't have anything for community date board, but I would like to say thank you to our two council members who have served so diligently and will be going off of city council. To Councilmen Staley, you were very passionate and involved, and I wanna say thank you for that. You were a model to many young people, and I highly respect you for that. Thank you. And to Van, eight years on city council, you've seen some crazy stuff, I know, but it's been good. Both of you have been involved in some very good things, and I'm gonna miss you very much, but I just wanna say thank you to both of you.
All right. Anything else for a community date board?
One more thing. This past Saturday, we had our breakfast, WCCA's Breakfast with Santa, and I just wanna thank, there were so many people up here that helped us out. Dan, Bob, Chris, Larry, thank you so much for, for coming and serving the pancakes, and we had five hundred people attend breakfast with Santa, and it was...
I don't know how it happened, but we had fun.
I don't know how it happened either, but we had a good time, and I, we saw a lot of really happy faces, so that's what it's all about.
Happy kids.
Yeah.
Anything else for a community date board? All right. So, we'll move on to poll council, and we'll begin with Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did wanna mention the Breakfast with Santa. That was, that was fun. It was a real good event. It was a great opportunity for us to be out within the community. I too wanna thank Van and Lee. It's been a pleasure and an honor working with you both, and it's been a good ride. Wonderful having you guys up here. Lee, stay involved. I mean, you're, you're very young yet, and you still have a lot to offer this community. And as far as the, I don't wanna say welcome to Whitehall, but re-welcome, welcome to Whitehall, I mean, a great opportunity to keep the momentum, momentum and the growth growing in Whitehall. And last of all, of course, Merry Christmas and safe and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
All righty. Mr. Greg?
I just, you know, really wanna thank everyone for coming and mainly thank the people in Ward Four. You know, when I tried this eight years ago, you know, I got out and I walked, met a lot of people, and in the meantime, I've learned to know my neighborhood, but also the city of Whitehall. Anytime I go anywhere, you know, there's a lot of people right now talking about Whitehall. Outside of Whitehall, they're talking about Whitehall. There's a lot of good things that's going on. And so, those eight years that I was here kinda makes me feel a little bit proud that I had something to do with that, although I need to also thank the people that elected me, thank the administration, phone calls, you know, helping me out, taking care of things, and then seeing the progress that our mayor has done in the eight years that I've been here, and I can see it continuing on for a good while, and kinda makes us feel pretty good that we live in Whitehall and things are going well. To President Graham and the council, thanks for all the support, you know, answers, questions, whatever I needed, but, you know, I'm gonna miss it. I still got, you know, decisions to make if I want to, but I'm gonna enjoy my time away, and, but I'm sure that I'll still probably get phone calls and still probably see some people. And Mary, thank you, along with Carol Churchman, because she helped me a lot when I first started. So, y'all, y'all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and go Clemson Tigers.
All right. Ms. Coniston ruined it.
Ruined it right at the end. Oh, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I'd like to thank Parks and Recreation for being so supportive of, of WCCA and coming out to all of our functions. It was wonderful to have you also at Breakfast with Santa. The kids absolutely loved making the cookies. Mr. Golden, you've got a gem right there, sitting right next to you. She looks as young as she did when Michelle had her in elementary school. I don't know how she does that. Welcome to Whitehall to both of the businesses, and also to Van over here. He's been my right-hand man. Him and I have a standing joke because I have, I have a drawer up here that I do need to go ahead and empty. It is definitely overflowing, and my mailbox is just as bad. Kind of our, our little standing joke between us. I am so gonna miss him. Kind of our little secrets going on up here. To Lee Staley, I'm, I'm gonna miss you, my friend, up here. I'm gonna see you, of course, out there. He is our treasurer of WCCA. The things that he's done in the last couple of years with his, with helping with the text-to-tip line and with the nine-one-one memorial event, I can't wait to see what else you do. This is the last night of Hanukkah. Tonight, we'll be lighting our eighth candle. For those of you that don't know, it's not really a sacred holiday, it's more of a fun holiday for us. It's all about a celebration. Back in the day, when only, they had enough oil, they thought that it was gonna burn one night, it burned for eight, and that is the reason that we go ahead and we do the eight candles and let the light shine over Whitehall tonight and always. Good health, good happiness, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to you.
Mr. Staley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Dixon and Madam Mayor and all the council for your kind words tonight. It has been a profound privilege getting to serve with you guys and represent the Ward Two for the city of Whitehall. It has been an honor getting to work with our citizens of Ward Two and all the citizens of Whitehall. I was trying to think of something clever to say as my last poll council. I couldn't think of anything. I'm not as creative as I try to be. So, my grandfather told me a quote, one that was told to him by his grandfather, and he said, "Success is not final. Failure is not fatal. It is the courage to continue that counts." So, this is not a good lie. It's not a so long. It is, I will see you next time. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome the new businesses to Whitehall and hope for success, and thank the Parks and Rec and the municipal members for all their service, as well as welcome the new council, people that's gonna be sitting up here for next year, Joanna and Lori. Look forward to working with you. And I would like to thank council for the patience this year and administration. It's been a good year, and I think we will continue to grow in a positive manner. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and enjoy working with you. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bailey?
Like there's anything left to say. Van, Lee...
Well, I see you have some stuff written down there, so...
Van, Lee, it's been great serving with you guys, and, you know, the work we do is great, but it's the relationships that I cherish and getting to know both of you, especially you, Van, over eight years. I can't believe it's gone, you know. Eight years went quick. And Lee, we made a good decision when we appointed you. You didn't let us down. You're very bright, and I know you'll stay engaged, and there's a lot more to come. You have plenty of time to, to do more. Congratulations to the employees of the year. That's definitely, there are, like somebody alluded to earlier, a lot of great, great people that work for our city, and for you guys to have that, be picked with that designation is, it should be quite an honor, and, and your service deserves to be recognized. Dennis, you ought to take Alice to dinner, 'cause I think she swayed all of us. Jason, congratulations, you know, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, you know, good luck and don't let us down, okay? I think you'll be fine. And Mayor, I wanna thank you for your comments on, some comments that were made earlier by Mr. Dixon. That area needed to be addressed over there with, you know, if you looked at statistics and kinda what the, the chief alluded to with their, the work that Mr. Burns does, look at statistics and work when we fix things, and that was an area that needed to be addressed, the blight, the crime, yes, the unfortunate deaths, and hopefully with the work the development department does, that area will be resurrected and, and, you know, just be a, you know, I wanna walk into that area and feel good again like we did when it was spareport apartments and I was eight years old visiting my aunt over there. It was, it was home to a lot of people, and hopefully it will be again, so thank you for your comments. Mr. President, I wanna thank you for being here tonight. What you do is not easy. It's so repetitious, and you make it look easy, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, I wanna thank everyone for being here this evening.